Is everybody on that needs to be at this point?
Yeah, I think so. Yeah, I think we're ready.
All right. It is shortly after nine. I'm going to call this meeting of the Cottington County Board of Commissioners to order. It is Tuesday, April 28, 2020. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance and I will leave that today.
My pledge of allegiance.
United States of America. Considered public, which it stands, one nation, under God.
Liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will move on to item number two. Call for public comment and during the COVID-19 event, public comments can be set up by calling the auditor's office. And then during the open part of the meeting, we will check and see if anyone has called in. Those two numbers are 882-6297 and 882-6288. We also stream live on YouTube for individuals if they want to be part of the meeting and not able to be here. And so with that, we do have Commissioner Johnson by teleconference. We have Rick Hartley, Luke Muller will be, Jamie Torsonson, Brad Howell, will he be coming in maybe?
Yeah, Brad's on there and then JT from the Public Opinion.
JT from the Public Opinion and we have in-house, Lee Gable, Charlie Waterman, Troy Van Duzen. And I will still call roll call for Commissioner Johnson since he is not present. All right. Yeah, physically present, teleconferencing. And that is the rules when they are not physically, we need to call a roll call on anyone who is not physically present. So item number three, conflict of interest. Is there a conflict of interest and of any of the commissioners on any of the items on the agenda?
Well.
I'm back up to number two, since we have the, you might want to mention that we have a public hearing at 9:30 on ordinance number 70. And so for some of the call, if you want to call in, that might be able to use the same numbers.
Same numbers. We did have it that they should call by noon yesterday, but if someone does call in this morning, it will be allowed just with the COVID. It's a little more difficult and cumbersome. So thank you for that. Yes.
That's not us. It might, some of our offices, yeah.
Okay.
We are in SDN, so we should be good.
All right. So.
That's not good.
No. So as Commissioner Van Duzen stated, VAST is having issues and they are down right now at the present time. So if any of our customers have that, that might be an issue.
The highway?
Highway shop. Rick, well, he might be on his phone. All right, we'll move on to item number four, action to approve the agenda. Motion by then, second by Waterman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, that motion carries. Item number five, action to approve the minutes of the April 21st, 2020 meeting. Any additions or corrections?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Gable, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Johnson. Any additions or corrections? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson, I'm sorry, I should. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number six, monthly reports. We will start out with Jamie, Emergency Management Director.
Ah, yes, good morning. Probably the biggest thing since last time we met, of course, I think I finished up with, there was a unified or a task force developed for this COVID-19. And what ended up happening on my end with our offices, we've became the logistics sector of that. And everything that developed under the unified command is what became of that. And who leads that charge is the Department of Health and the Governor's Office along with the state OEM office. And our local unified command, that consists of the mayor of Watertown. But the biggest part, key players are the Prairie Lakes Healthcare, Sanford Brown Clinic, the Watertown Fire and Police Department, along with the Cottington County Sheriff's Office are the unified commanders. Underlying that is quite a, quite of operations chief, planning chiefs, logistics, which is myself, and along with finance, quite a few public service and volunteer branches. In a nutshell, everything that we've provided so far is getting the healthcare folks along with our first line responders and law enforcement, fire departments, what have you. With not only the N95 masks, along with a lot of the cloth masks, which have come out of, mainly volunteers and donations. The N95s, we work closely with the Department of Health and providing quite a bit of those. We've also been channeling quite a bit with containers for hand sanitizer, working closely with Glacial Lakes Energy and the LATI folks at the school. And they are the lab for that and they produce quite a little. We've done only for our county, first line health responders and nursing homes and all the people that are on those front lines thus far. We meet every week with that channel and on Fridays along with other PPE needs such as gowns. Raven Industries is one of them that you folks helped out with on a shared cost, but we've had quite a few donations of, from the LATC folks, LATI folks, excuse me. And along with using the Salvation Army as a drop point and other local area businesses providing a lot of those cloth masks. But like I said, the Department of Health provides us with alcohol wipes and other gowns and needs. They're, it's a little slow because they're very overwhelmed, of course. Mainly our, our office, along with using the sheriff's office and search and rescue support, we logistically get that out to our folks in our county, including nursing homes in Florence and the Meadow Lake assisted living. We've provided quite a bit of, it slowed down a little bit, but the hand sanitizer is out there. Thus far, I provided about 401 gallon containers and roughly 50 to 60 of the 55 gallon containers to meet that need for those folks. Oh, let's see, other. We have a, I'll move on to item two for myself here on my own notes. FEMA, we've been with FEMA rep, we've been getting emails and channeling out for our disaster 4440, which was our road projects out in the western half there, which have now went under again. But I believe those payments are coming in. We've been granted our LMPG money for the first quarter has been awarded and that should be coming in within the next 30 days. I've been advised by the Highway Department of the Roads West, I've been off on a couple of site surveys with him and along with some other various areas. Dry Lake and all those areas continue to come up. I don't know if it's just the saturation is what we determined that there's no place for that water to go. So a lot of those lakes, slews and ponds are kind of growing. The best advice I got out of the state OEM office on the mitigation side of that was to document, document, document and take many pictures because there may be a possibility of FEMA might be working on a different grant process we could apply for just for like a hazard mitigation to get those roads out of trouble water. But I have not seen or heard anything back out of them yet, never over a week ago. Last Friday, of course, we kicked off, the National Weather Service depleted the, the need for the statewide warning tornado drill. So what we decided to do at our office last at noon, we kicked off all our sirens. And I'm happy to say that all of them, except for about one, has got an issue locally in town. But all of our county towns sounded and everything looks good there. Well, this morning I woke up to about 22 hundreds of rain, by looks of it. All of our rivers are looking good and all the tributary channel creeks and all that, they're still maintaining down anywhere between two feet to three feet below their action stages. But our Lake of Pesca and Lake Pelican are averaging right at or below that 19 foot mark, which has been staying pretty coarse and steady on far as that end. But it's still above full, but it doesn't seem to be coming out of ponds. By the looks of the, what I look at on the National Weather Service as far as river lakes and streams shows that those are staying very steady at just that full mark. We've been using quite a few, we've had a few calls in the county as far as some fires, I think last week with the dryness. Every volunteer fire department in all of our outlined towns was used last week at some point or another in that course of four or five days for tractor fires and brush fires. The search and rescue team was activated a couple of times in the last month, mainly for missing persons. One was up in De County in early March, which resolved itself and along with a couple of missing other people locally, but they've all been called down and channeled out and approved correctly. I've been using quite a bit of the, on the logistics side, the search and rescue team for the food drive. Every Thursday, they help our local partners there and with traffic control and keeping the lines moving on that. We meet every Friday with our county towns on a task force to see any of their needs as far as hand sanitizer and to combat COVID-19. The other thing that we picked up on the county side for search and rescue would be we're getting and planning for our raffle. Tickets are available and things are moving smoothly there. We've got to do some other planning on maybe canceling the event. We will see what's to be had. But I think as far as the COVID-19 right now is concerned, we'll see what the governor puts out today on her basic plan of coming back slowly. But I think we flatten the curve in this Cottington County area very well. And with the city's announcement yesterday, we'll see where it goes from here. Any questions for me?
I don't have any. Does anyone else have any questions or comments to Jamie?
I thought that was a good rundown, so.
Yep. Good job. It was very beneficial with some of our assisted livings out in the county. Jamie's been able to help assist them as well with some of their needs, so it's been good.
I guess maybe one by way of, Jamie, could you repeat where the, the hand sanitizer is going? Just the kinds of places where that's going to?
Yes, the, the first line was all of our healthcare responders, first line frontline responders. Healthcare providers especially was the first time. Then what that channeled out to was like our nursing homes, there was a few daycares that got included on some of that. The people that are dealing with trying to create their COVID-19 battles as far as hygiene. The nursing homes, I think I said that one, daycares, hospitals, and foremost probably law enforcement folks along with all of our local county fire departments and volunteers was the first phase of that. Now it's really kind of slow because I think we've met their needs. The Glacial Lakes has really been challenged and along the lake area, they can produce it very fast, but they have to keep very good tabs on where it goes. But they're getting demands very big in just the state. And I know locally Glacial Lakes has been providing to hospitals without this whole region, along with the state prison and what have you. Like I said, we, on our resource side, we have mainly hit just our Cottington County residents and that was our goal. But I continue to work with them every Friday and helping them find resources on their own end. And a lot of it's been donated, but the one gallon containers are relatively inexpensive. I've provided locally out of a local grocery channel store and then a water distribution out of Roberts County.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments?
Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you, Jamie, for your report. Do we have the sheriff on? He has his report today.
Yes. Good morning, everybody.
Morning, Brad.
All right. I don't know if I sent up my stuff yesterday afternoon. I'm not sure if it made it up there, but.
Yeah, I have, let me see if I can figure out how to put it on the screen here real quick.
While you're doing that, I'll start with the monthly balance sheet here. The bank balance for the end of March was $7,736. Copy fees collected were $16. Sheriff's fees collected were $6,880.50. Warrant fees collected were $250 for a man total of $7,146.50. Then there was $132.25 in printed bank checks, so back to the 589.50. Lee's got the jail and sheriff's report pulled up there. You start on the top there, you'll see for March, cases and calls, we had 581 cases and calls, which is consistent with March of 19 there. Accidents, reports completed were seven. 58 warrants were served, 235 civil papers were served and 7,683 miles for transport miles. Some of those miles were, we had to run to Texas and pick up a fender down there, bring him back. So full 27 people transported in 21 traps for that 7,683 miles. Scroll down just a little bit more, you'll see the jail average daily population is in March, 57.39. Our high average daily population on March 7th was 80 people. You can see that the COVID here definitely, definitely taken a toll and lowering our jail numbers, which has been kind of a reprieve. So our low ADP was 37. Scram was 25. Twice daily PBTs, 58, twice weekly UAs, 48, and a sweat patch of two and bookings of 172. A 24/7 program has been suspended because of this COVID, so next month and we won't have probably any fees or anything coming in for that. So that's something that we're going to have to, we'll be looking at this week to see what we can do to maybe bring that back and work with the courts on that a little bit. One other thing here, kind of looking at our average daily population. For March, I just took a snapshot a couple of days ago, we're looking at about 31.77. So it's considerably less. Once this is all over with, I, I feel we're going to have a large booming population again because the courts will be back to full strength and we're going to have a lot of, a lot of customers back.
Well, one thing, if I can make a quick comment, sheriff, while you're talking about that, I just been, happened to, working with Matt about looking at some of the data. And in the past few days, I've seen it kind of creep up in the unsentenced onesie twosie. So the sentence stuff is going down because the judges are allowing people to serve their time at a later time. But the, but it's interesting that the, the unsentenced are just kind of slowly creeping up there again. So it went from, I think, I want to say back in the 19th, they looked at it, it was like 26 or 27 and last night it was 35. So it, interesting kind of to see that.
Yeah, and those unsentenced will stay that way until.
Yeah.
Things get on.
Initial appearances are even being pushed out to July as of now. So that's a long stretch there of people that still have to go through the court system and so, yep. If you scroll on down a little bit more there, you'll see March out of county contracts were brought in were $16,069.97. Work release fees of $4,430. 24/7 fees, $7,142 and scram fees of $3,630. Same thing with work release, that's been discontinued right now and the judges have been working with us on that. So there won't be a whole lot of work release fees coming in next month either. And any questions on that before we jump to the, just a couple of other little things here? All right, last Friday, we did open up our request for proposals for meal services in the jail. We did receive two of them. There's no action today. I just figured I'd share that with you. Lee's looking them over, we're looking them over, comparing them and looking to see prices and see how they sit, so. Little update on that. That COVID grant that I shared last week, we did talk to our person that's managing the grant. They did say that we are approved for $58,008 for COVID response, those, those topics that I was talking about last week. The money is not here yet. That takes, she said, up to two weeks to get that, get the funds to start getting those. But we are approved, so I did order phones and ordered some of those things that we were talking about last week. And lastly, wind tower traffic will be starting to pick up here out in the county. Just like to make sure we share that with everybody, going to be a lot more people on county roads again. There's complaints and issues, feel free to give us a call. We'll be out there full force as we were last year, trying to manage them, that population and try to slow them down a little bit, so.
All right. Anyone have any questions or concerns, comments?
Just to add to what the sheriff said, Madam Sheriff, on the, on the food, the RFPs, so we got two proposals for the food services in the jail. We're hoping that maybe next week we could, we can award that, but we'll have to take a look because they're, they're pretty thick documents to go through, so. One company was out of Iowa and I forget the other company, I want to say, was it Georgia? But, or I forget, but, but anyway, so we got two, two decent proposals.
All right. Sounds good. Anyone else have any other questions? Hearing none. Thank you, Brad.
All right, thank you.
Will you be calling for exact, is that what your plan is? Or just going to appear?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so we will jump over item number seven, since that's slated for 9:30 and move on to item number eight, action to approve employee phone stipends. Cindy?
That's Steve Mullengraph.
Oh, okay.
That's his item.
I thought that was the yearly thing.
No, we did that in January.
Steve has a few things in a row here, so.
What I'm requesting for is I have an employee that has a county phone currently right now and I'm requesting to have a phone stipend on him because I'm going to discontinue that line of phones that Milo had. So that he agreed with going with a phone stipend, so I could cancel those phones.
We need the name of the employees and we need the amount and the start date.
Okay, um, the Brian Bleeker. And I would imagine it's probably going to be probably start date of May or of June 1st. By the time I get the cancellation done on that phone service.
And what's the amount of the stipend?
25.
Okay. All right, you heard Steve's request. Do I have a motion in a second to approve this? And a motion by Waterman, do I have a second? Second by Gable. Any further discussion? What, I'm guessing there will be a cost savings by going this route?
Yeah, well, currently right now with the, with the phone that he is, it's about $30 for that phone that he's using. So it will be a cost savings plus the cost savings of the additional lines that were on that one. Being I already have county one through another entity, so.
Okay. Well, that sounds good. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. You have item number nine, action to advertise higher seasonal weed sprayers.
Yeah, being that, I guess I'm, I'm out for much of spraying, so I have myself, I am asking for possibly two. I have a seasonal worker that right now that kind of has a sideline business also and he'd like to have a little less hours, so I'd like to supplement his time that he does spray plus the additional to replace my spraying.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, we got a motion by Gable. Do I have a second? Second by Van Duzen. Any other discussion? All right, hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries as well. Item number 10, action to purchase a floor scrubber for the Extension Center complex as budgeted.
This, but this item was budgeted through Milo last year to, for this year to replace its, replacing a floor scrubber that was purchased back in 2013, I believe. It's getting, this, it uses a lot out to the extension building for cleaning all those floors and expos and, and a little bit out in the sale ring plus the echo chamber. So I'm requesting to purchase this from Proline. It is a local business. I had gotten some other quotes and they were really well, very competitive for the other ones, so.
Looks like they're giving us a better, better price than retail.
Right.
When you look at the invoice or the quote, yeah.
Plus I added, added and so bad for the little larger batteries, for the longer lifespan of use each of the machine.
Quote up here. Look for a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion.
A motion by Gable. Do I have a second? Second by Waterman. Any other discussion or questions with the old one? Will they?
Yeah, they're taking in the old one that's in with trade and so.
Then we need to declare that surplus at a future meeting.
Yep, yep.
Well, this is probably the first unit that they had a drivable unit, otherwise it's been a walk behind all the time before. They bought this about 213, it looked like from the inventory list. So, so seven years, you know, with the amount of use.
There's a lot of use out of that building, yeah.
So.
Commissioner Johnson, did you have any, anything you wanted to say?
My question was the trade-in and you answered that. Thank you.
Okay.
So I have it on the agenda for next week to declare that surplus to be traded.
Yep.
All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries as well. All right. Thank you, Steve.
Thanks, Steve.
I don't think there's anything different with Memorial Park. Is there, Steve? We have down here on 15, nothing different with Memorial Park at this point, correct? Or will you? Okay. All right. Then we'll wait till we get down there. We'll maybe try to get Rick on before 9:30 so that he can get busy.
We only have one minute.
Okay. Well, Luke is on. All right, sorry, Rick. We'll have to have you hang in there.
No problem.
All right, so as soon as it hits 9:30, we will start with this. Item number seven on the agenda. Good morning, Luke.
Good morning.
That's the longest minute ever.
Must have just.
There we go, 9:30. There we go. Okay, all right. So we're official. We will do item number seven, the second reading, public hearing and action to approve ordinance number 70. First of all, I would like to have a motion in a second so that we can have discussion and then I'll have Luke give his explanation.
I'll make the motion.
Got a motion by Gable, a second by Van Duzen. Okay, Luke, if you would want to read that portion of the ordinance for us and an explanation, please.
Sure, I will first perform the second reading of this ordinance and which is ordinance number 70. An emergency ordinance temporarily amending the Kynan County subdivision ordinance pursuant to SDCL 11-2, 1967 and amendments thereof. Here's what this ordinance does. It adds a temporary amendment to the subdivision ordinance for the county, which the subdivision ordinance, I took for granted that everyone listening along and playing along at home knows what that is. That is the requirement of when we need to have plats, land planted to go from the so many feet of the so many feet to lot one of Muller addition. And so that, this just allows, this is an amendment. Typically that process goes to the Planning Commission at a meeting and then to the County Commission, both, both bodies approving it. There's a section of state law that allows an administrative officer for the counties and/or municipality, depending on what your flavor is, to have that administrative officer approve things. Typically that's done on replats and places, instances where you're not requiring to add a bunch, add right of way or access to something. In this ca, in the cases of counties, typically you're not adding right of way. So that's why a lot of times counties don't immediately bestow that upon their zoning officers. We have had discussions at the Planning Commission before to maybe in those cases where the Planning Commission, or sorry, the Board of Adjustment already said, hey applicant, you platted as long as it looks like what we say, it'll be fine. This document temporarily allows those folks who are doing exactly that on a farmstead exemption is typically the case that we have those to have the zoning officer approve those since the Board of Adjustment has already reviewed those. The other parts that are in there are anything that is a lot that meets the minimum lot requirements of the underlying zoning district. So again, I'm not authorized as an administrative official by this ordinance. I'm not authorized to plat a 14 acre parcel without board review. I would anticipate and I'm going to recommend in any actions that unless it's a farmstead exemption, that it goes back to the Planning Commission and County Commission for their approval throughout this timeframe. It's only the farmstead exemptions really, because that's almost a prerequisite to just get a building permit is all that's left. But again, it's only going to be allowing the zoning officer to approve plat. But again, it's only going to be allowing the zoning officer to approve plats where one, a farmstead exemption was granted, requiring them to plat the a lot, or two, uh, that the um lots all meet the minimum lot requirement. In most cases, that's gonna be the thirty-five acres.
All right.
Though I guess the last thing I should point out is that this this rule is scheduled to end in September of this year. And if the boards decide that they want me to continue to have that ability, well, we'll review that and we'll go through the formal process. It won't be under an emergency clause. It'll be under and placed into the subdivision ordinance permanently.
Okay. All right, with that, I am going to open it up to the public for public comment. I just checked and no one had called in yet. I will call three times and then I'll just check one more time, make sure um no one has called in. So um, does anyone from the public have any comment on this issue? Does anyone from the public have any comments on this issue? Does anyone from the public have any comments on this issue?
Nothing.
Okay, so with that, I will close the public hearing. And now we will open it up for the commission for any questions or comments from Luke. All right, seeing none, I guess we are ready to vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. So ordinance number seventy is approved and it's upon publication when it takes effect, is that correct?
Twenty days.
That is, sorry.
Sorry, yep.
That is correct. Uh, Cindy, for your reference, I'll put together the um notice of adoption, send it on to you here, try to get to you today.
Okay, thank you.
And so that you can send it on as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right.
Thanks, Luke.
Okay, we will move on then to Rick, item number eleven, action to approve annual striping agreement with the South Dakota DOT.
Good morning.
Good morning, Rick.
This is a budgeted item every year for striping on our roads that we chip seal and if we do any paving on.
All right.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a dollar amount on here?
It's.
It's thirty-one thousand five hundred ninety-one dollars and twenty-six cents.
And for how many miles?
Thirty.
Thirty miles, okay.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we got a motion by Gable, a second by Johnson. Is there any discussion on this?
So just just like just echo what Rick said, so this is a an annual thing that we do and it is budgeted.
We only get.
It's it's uh through the state. Uh, they they line everything up, the the painters, everything. Only thing we have to do is mark off for the no passing zone signs and things like that, make sure the road swept off.
Right, Commissioner Van Duzen, did you have a question? Did you hear?
No, I can't, I can't hear his question.
Okay, one moment.
Rick, do you know what we spent last year on that? Was that in line with how much we spent last year?
Yeah, it's it's pretty close to the same.
Okay, thank you.
We only get so many miles with the dollars and seems like it's about the same. Um, Commissioner Johnson, did you have any comments or questions?
No, I just couldn't hear Troy, but it came through the second time it came through good.
Yeah, we're just sharing a mic out here, that's why, so, sorry. All right, do we have any other comments, questions? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Oh, Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number twelve, action to approve an um notion? Most action, oh, a notice, I'm sorry, I'm reading it wrong, per seizing in motion. Actually, to approve a notice to bidders for the Willow Creek Bank stabilization project.
This is on, this is on County Road seven five east of town along Willow Creek. This is another budgeted item that we had, the Willow Creek has washed into the county right away along the Blacktop Road. This will straighten that out, rip rap it and uh hopefully take care of the situation there.
All right, do I have a motion in a second to notice, all right, motion by Waterman, second by Gable. Any further discussion? Now, this has been something we've been talking about doing for a year or so, so that will be good to be able to get that accomplished. Any other comments, questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number thirteen, action on a request from Lutheran Church of Redeemer to hold summer church services at Memorial Park.
Move to approve.
Got a motion by Johnson, second by Van Duzen. Any discussion on this?
Yeah, we've got a major problem. You've got congregation of people and you have no facilities to put them in if they need them. Because you don't have a bathroom except self-contained campers.
Right.
Um, their request does, the date of their start is yet to be determined and Memorial, they will wait until Memorial Park again opens to the public.
They're just doing it as a formality to just have.
So I don't think they're gonna start until our, till we're open to the public.
Yeah.
The way it looks to me.
That's, that's fine, it was.
I can, I can make sure when I email them.
Yeah.
I'll make sure when I email them that there, that's understood, that there are no facilities available out there. And I think they're on.
And it says, and Memorial Park again opens to the public through Labor Day. This is their formality.
They're on the west side, yeah, yeah. But we'll just, um, they need to follow CDC guidelines, I would say, that are in effect also, right?
But it doesn't look like, yeah, until they open to the public, so.
I would suggest that we amend the motion to, where does, I'm just looking at the wording.
Comply with CDC guidelines and.
And Memorial Park again opens to the public, which part are you?
Okay, I'm just, okay, so um, I would.
That's fine with me if you want to amend it, but I think they understand without amending it, I think they, in the letter, they've indicated that this is what they're going to do.
Okay, okay, I guess I'm good with that. I'm not worried about it, so.
Thirty-six miles.
All right.
Only thirty this year, so that's.
Um, and this is a formality they typically just do to have this in place for whenever that will be allowed. Any other comments, questions? We have a motion, a second, are we ready to vote? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number fourteen, discussion possible action on the COVID nineteen practices and procedures. Uh, we do have an item there today as the city let their ordinance sunset last night. Um, I guess I felt maybe we needed to do a little revisions with our own uh resolution where we would take out um paragraphs numbers, was it?
I put it up, it's up on the screen.
Okay, you got that.
Do you want me to walk you through it, Madam Chair?
This other one, and I, um.
Do you want me to, I can walk through it real quick.
Okay, yeah, just to remove the the four, five, six, and seven, basically, any of restrictions that we would have had is strongly urged, but at least take it out and and refer it to the governor's executive order. So Lee, you go ahead.
Yeah, just so, um, so everything, so this is uh basically twenty twenty dash eight, but we're gonna call it twenty twenty dash nine and then revoke uh or repeal twenty twenty dash eight, which was the last version of this. And so we'd keep the the provisions to keep the county facilities closed to the public and still handle business the way we are doing it right now. Um, and then take out all the strongly urged stuff that echoed what the city did for basically um asking restaurants and similar establishments to go to a takeout only. Um, so remove all those paragraphs and then just simply have a paragraph stating to um encourage or urge businesses to follow the CDC in South South Dakota or South Dakota Department of Health, Dakota here.
Um, with that, though, we kind of talked about like the city, they're referring to the executive order. Becky, do you wanna?
Do you wanna, I can add a word in here about.
Think we should also include the governor's executive order.
That's up to you. I was looking at the word and third line, this is strongly urged to close, to apply social distancing, so I think we just get.
Okay, so where do you guys, typing quickly this morning. Okay. I was typing quickly this morning, so. Um, and then we can add in the executive and to um just maybe say uh it's promulgated by the governor's.
Executive orders.
Do you want me to?
She'll have another one. Today or tomorrow? It is today? Oh, okay, I was thinking it was tomorrow. Okay, so, yeah, if we just say, we, if we aren't specific to which one, well, as as her orders change, I mean, we have executive orders, so I would think we're following suit with her.
I can say concerning, just so it's clear. Take a look at that wording. So it, I can read the whole thing here. So effective immediately, all restaurants, food courts, coffee houses, bars, breweries, distilleries, wineries, clubs, cafes, and other similar places of public accommodation offering food and beverages for on sale consumption, including any alcohol licensees, on with on sale privileges are strongly urged to apply social distancing guidelines promulgated by the governor's executive orders concerning the COVID nineteen crisis, the CDC, and South Dakota Department of Health and their places of business.
Everybody okay with that?
I'll put a the in front of CDC.
Yeah, CDC guidelines.
Just for clarification, this is my, uh, what are we saying here that, okay, I'll be very specific. I have a restaurant in my backyard here, the barn. Will they be able to open up and serve?
Yes.
Food, alcohol, it's it's a large place, they can keep their distance, I'm sure.
Yes, they will be able to, according to what we're doing now. Uh, they just need to, because we're reverting now back to the governor's executive orders and CDC guidelines. So the county is taking our strongly urged um suggestions off and now it's gonna revert back to what the governor and and CDC.
Yeah, can you, can you see, can you see the?
Effective immediately.
Yeah, can you, can you guys see that on the screen? Can you see that on the screen, Myron, pretty well?
Uh, I I just blew it up, so yeah, I can see it better. The other, the other request that I had, the other question was with Sue Conifer Nursery, uh, the greenhouse. You know, that's a large area there too. They they uh would like to uh open up, but they can keep their distance and control the number of people in the nursery at any one time. And they they showed us that, showed me that that's what they were going to be doing.
That isn't, isn't that, um, that's not governed by the county, is it?
We weren't really, I don't think.
We haven't included them in any of our.
Yeah, but I mean, it's good that they're being careful, but I, yeah, the resolution that we had, as I understand it, is mostly deals with restaurants, bars, and those types of places.
But they are county.
If I could just make a quick statement here, just for clarification, the point of clarification, the county, everything can reopen as long as they're following the CDC guidelines as outlined by the governor's executive order. Does that make sense, Myron? So.
No, that makes perfect sense.
Okay.
Yeah, it's.
Becky, that's correct?
We're in line, yeah. It's the same as the city. We're in line with what the city is doing and that's what we've kind of been doing all along is um staying in line with them, but we could only strongly urge, but now we're removing that verbiage, except for it does say strongly urge up there yet, but it's more on the applying the guidelines, so, yeah.
Yeah, we want them to apply the guideline, because we can't, in in the county, we can't order anybody to do that, like like the municipality can.
All right.
And which which echoes, I mean, I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Um, if you wanna, if we want to, um, the governor, yeah, the governor uses words like consider.
Well, couldn't we just eliminate that and use the governor's executive order as our guideline?
Well, I put that in there, so I put, I put governor's executive orders concerning the COVID nineteen crisis, because the one I'm looking at happens to be twenty, the executive order twenty twenty dash twelve.
That's the one I have.
Which is the one we're going on, but she's probably, she may do other ones as well, you know, relevant to the crisis, so I just put that up there.
Yeah.
Why not just make it following the governor's guidelines and orders and as they change, uh, will automatically change.
Isn't that, okay, here's what, I know you can't, it's hard to. Yeah, well, here's, here's what the, here's what the words say, and I think, I think we did that. I know, I know you can't see it on the screen, but I'll read it again. Um, so the governor's, so, uh, are strongly urged to apply social distancing guidelines promulgated by the governor's executive orders concerning the COVID nineteen crisis, comma, the CDC and the South Dakota Department of Health and their places of business. So those are, those, those three, governor's executive orders, the CDC and the South Dakota Department of Health should all be in concert anyway. Um, I mean, I guess you could just take out the CDC and the South Dakota Department of Health if you wanted to.
I would leave the CDC. If anything, the South Dakota Department of Health, but CDC guidelines should probably remain.
Yeah, I mean, they're all, they're all in concert, so.
I think.
I would be very, very much surprised if the governor, if the governor does not follow CDC guidelines.
Yeah, she just says it in hers too. She mentions CDC, so it's okay to have that in. She makes mention to it. All right, are we okay with that verbiage and to?
You can see the the rest, so after those, these paragraphs here, and I know if you can't see them on the screen, so starting where it says paragraph five, I don't know if you can see the, where I'm kind of moving, wiggling the mouse around. Um, on down to, those are all the strongly urged ones that echoed the city's prohibitions for city businesses. Um, those are all crossed out. Those are all struck, the line through. And then then it just goes on to the, to the signature area. Um, so.
So basically, what we're, yeah, what we're doing is our court, our county um facilities will remain closed at this time, but as far as the businesses, we have taken off our strongly urged and let them follow the CDC, the governor's executive orders.
We want people to go out, we want them to frequent our businesses, we want them to patronize our facilities in the county. Do it responsibly, protect yourself, and just take steps to to ensure your own safety. That's, that's what has to be done.
Yep, absolutely, that's what I'm hearing from, you know.
I have one final comment, does that come?
You pointed the mic.
I have one final comment that comes from the governor this morning. If you're feeling that scared and you're feeling that paranoid and you don't feel safe, stay home. But do it on an individual basis.
All right, so.
Chair, I have a one comment too.
Sure.
Uh, I would recommend that we keep this on the agenda because this will be changing week by week.
Yep, because it just depends on now when all this happens, what the outcome is going to be and going forward, we don't know.
Right.
Yes. To repeal the.
To to basically do this and the repeal is in, it's in.
Yeah, we're adopting this resolution, which repeals, it's in the language, yeah.
Second.
Yep.
Okay, we have a motion by Van Duzen, a second by Waterman. Any other discussion?
This is effective immediately.
Yep, effective immediately. Um, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Um, very good, thank you. We will, this is a moving target. We don't know from week to week what's gonna happen, so. We will keep it on the agenda. Okay, item number fifteen, discussion possible action regarding Memorial Park campground operations. Mr. Waterman, did you say you had a comment you wanted to make?
Yes, I did. Uh, I've had some people approach. We've had a number of people come to inquire at the park. Now that the weather's getting nicest, nicer, they've had their stimulus checks, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. We're getting a lot more traffic out there. And I am proposing that we open one bathroom and that is with our director's approval. So I would make that, one bathroom will be open out there and it will be cleaned at the, on a scheduled time.
Do, do we wanna get some comment from Steve maybe, or have you already discussed that?
I, I mean, I guess we discussed and connected them all, I don't know.
Yeah. Yeah.
Give him the mic. I can't hear.
He's got one now.
I got it now, Myron. I guess, you know, as long as we can keep it, you know, frequently cleaned. So my stipulation would at least between an hour to two hours at least to clean it. And so I, I mean, I don't know what these other facilities, yeah, it just one, it's just a set of bathrooms. It's basically up, would be up by the area where the church would hold. All it is is just bathrooms. But just, and it's by the shop, it would be frequently cleaned, you know, like I said, between an hour to two hours a day. So just to keep it sanitary enough. I have no idea what other public buildings are doing, how often they're cleaning. So that, you know, going into Menards, going into Walmart, so that, there's a lot of people going in. It's amazing. So I guess that would be my comment.
Just one question. And so so maybe to either, either Steve or Commissioner Waterman. So we're still talking about keeping the self-contained, you know, so still no tent camping and then, or at least a self-contained camping arrangement. And then, so this is primarily to accommodate people who might be walking or doing, you know, maybe mostly non-campers.
Yeah, this, this is no change to the, to the previously, what we discussed last week about self-contained campers. We're not including tent campers. We're not including this, but we've got a situation possibly developing with the, with the church. We've got a lot of walkers and things like that out there. And after seeing the parking lot again at Menards and Walmart, it looked like a Black Friday special.
I guess I would just add comment to that, that the city hasn't loosened their restrictions yet on their restroom facilities in their parks. You know, I think you take more liability on by having it open than not at this point because how are you going to, you know, I mean, you can say you're going to do it every few hours, but then if something happens in between, I guess they've been saying with the walkers, you're going to have to kind of prepare for that on your own, that you're not going to have a bathroom facility to be able to utilize. So I guess.
Well, I would, I would come back with that, Madam Chairman. We are the county, not the city. The city has to take care of themselves and we have to take care of the county. And as far as making sure that's cleaned, I think we have to trust our director and the people that work out there.
I guess I'll just kind of piggyback on what Charlie was saying there for just a moment. I like the idea of keeping the camper self-contained if they can use their own bathroom. I think that's great. But I personally don't see an issue with opening up the bathrooms out there at this time. We're all in this building. We're using the same restroom. The amount of campers that we're going to have out there, as long, as long as you feel that the staff out there can do an adequate job of wiping things down and in taking care of that, at least one facility out there, I wouldn't be opposed to reopening. So that's my two cents on that.
I will concur.
So I guess if someone wants to make a motion, do open up those bathrooms.
I'll make a motion.
I need to have the motion stated.
I guess what's the, what's the feeling, the general consensus here amongst us as far as one bathroom or two bathrooms, I guess? Or do we just reopen them all? Okay. Okay. My motion will be just a.
What is, does it have a specific name, this restroom? Is it on the west side?
It's up on the west side by the pavilion.
Okay. Okay, the restroom, the restrooms by the pavilion building. Okay.
Okay, that'll be my motion and to open up the set of bathrooms by the pavilion.
Okay.
I would second that.
Got it.
Got a motion and second. Any other discussion? All right, hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. That motion carries. I guess we'll open up a bathroom. Hopefully that all goes well. Item number 16, action to approve claims for payment.
It'll go very well.
Claims we have today are April salary claims. Total claims are in the amount of $554,299.06. This does include a payout of accumulated vacation and sick leave for two county employees who recently retired. And that went into the special pay plan.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, we got a motion by Vandusen, second by Johnson. Any other discussion, questions? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Item number 17, action to approve automatic budget supplements.
Nothing to that.
Item number 18, action to approve personnel changes.
I have two of those. The first one is Justin Halligan, who was a maintenance, he was lead maintenance in the maintenance department. He is being promoted to deputy maintenance supervisor due to the retirement of the previous deputy. He will start at step nine, 2316 per hour on that pay scale. Excuse me, Doug Torstensen is maintenance two at the highway department. He's doing anniversary step increase to step six, 2165 per hour.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Gable to have a second. Second by Waterman. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. That motion carries. Item number 19, action to approve travel requests.
I have no travel requests.
Shouldn't have any of those, no public notices of a quorum. And so let's move on to number 21, old business. Anyone have any old business?
Madam Chair, just to, one thing, the sprinkler system is more or less done. Just, so they tested it and so that's good to go. So we did, we got the near final bill, just a few cosmetic things. There is a little bit of wiring to do for the, the alarms.
Was that part of the contract amount?
It's, it has to do with.
Or is it separate?
I think it's, I think it's.
The project's not done.
No, we still have our retainage. So, yeah, we still have the retainage. So, so, but we just got that bill. We're not paying it today, but, but that just came in. Just to let everybody know that that, that, that project's about. Yeah, that project is just about done.
All right. Anyone else have any old business? Seeing none. Any new business? Item number 22 on the agenda. Have any new business? Public comments?
I think they would let us know, but.
All right. No one has called in for the open portion. So now we will go into executive session. I know we've got some personnel. I'm not sure the sheriffs, would that fall under personnel as well?
I think, yeah, those are, that's just, I think it's all just personnel.
All right. So I entertain a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
And a second by Gable, motion by second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
All right. We are in executive session.